So we'll call this to order at 7:03 according to my computer. 2.0, does anyone have any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll go to 3.0, Audience and Communications. I see our two teachers, but I don't see any other audience. So we'll move on and making good progress. 4.0, Presentations, 4.1, World Language.
So I'd like to introduce Zelphacasti and Aina Kaluna as our French and Spanish teachers, and they have a very nice presentation set up for you.
Thanks.
So bonsoir, je m'appelle Zelphacasti, je suis le prof de français. C'est ma troisième année d'entraînement à Heinsburg Community School.
Bonnes noches, mesdames et messieurs, Aina Kaluna, je suis la professeurale espagnole de Heinsburg School, et c'est mon second an.
We might continue with in Spanish and French, but we're gonna switch to English.
I told them that they should do the whole presentation in French and Spanish.
So again, my name is Zelphacasti, I am the French teacher, and this is my 13th years teaching at Heinsburg.
My name is Aina Kaluna, I'm the Spanish teacher at Heinsburg Community School, and this is my second year.
Hi, so this evening, we're going to present the World Language Program, and this is the overview of the presentation. We're going to talk about the benefits of learning another language, indicators of success. The World Language Program in general, let's say, assess you what's happening, what are the offerings, world language goals. And what example, we're gonna show you a sample of what are the interactive learning experiences that the kids, you know, do in the program. Evidencees on students' work, and also, we're gonna share with you evidence of language growth through video clips. And then, what do we believe, you know, about this program and the outcomes?
Well, there has been a lot of studies about what is so important to study a simple language, especially at a given age. So we have, we, this is like specially with the three main benefits, which is the cognitive benefits, the academic benefits, and the societal benefits. And it shows that the more language, the earlier you start with a second language, it improves the creative skills, your language settles more and higher and better. In the academic benefits, it has been proved that the students do better in tests, in general content tests, because their critical thinking skills get enhanced. And societal, because they learn to appreciate other cultures and the diversity of our world.
Okay, so this, those are the indicators of success based on our experience teaching students studying at grade one. So we have noticed increased motivation and desire to learn another language. Students demonstrated sharper listening and comprehension skills. Also, they demonstrated improved writing skills, improved communicative skills, higher self-confidence when using the target language within the classroom and beyond. They also showed stronger ability to compare and contrast the target language with our native language, and for some instances, between French and Spanish, which is really great. Also, they showed expanded geographical knowledge, because we tie this with culture, and increased appreciation and acceptance of cultural dynamics and differences. So when, you know, we start them at first grade, it becomes embedded in the program, and it doesn't become like an overwhelming task when they get to the middle school. And it really paid off throughout the cycle that we've been going through.
This is the offer of World Language in CCSU. So we have Shellboard, Wiliston, and Heinsburg, and we have, of course, CBU. In Heinsburg, we offer Spanish and French from one to eight. And first grade, grades till five grades, they see, they have Spanish. At English, half of the year, they have Spanish, half of the year, they have French. And from grades one to two, they have once per week for 40 minutes. Grades three to five, they have two times a week for 40 minutes. Sixth grade, they have three times per week for 40 minutes. And grades seven and eight, they have four times per week for 40 minutes.
Okay, our world language goals is for students to acquire proficiency in reading, writing, speaking, and listening as identified in the Common Core State Standard, reinforce learning of general curriculum content, and acquire an understanding of and appreciation of other cultures.
The big association for foreign language teachers is called ACFEL, American Association for Foreign Language Teachers. So they have the foreign language standards, and they have aligned the foreign language standards, the National Foreign Language Standards with the Common Core State Standards. So in the interpersonal area, they align it with the speaking, listening, writing, and reading, because the kids receive and provide information. In the interpretive, they listen, they read, and also, they can view. So it could be, they are receiving all the information, and in the presentational, they have to provide that information in the different ways, writing, speaking, and also representing with different media.
All right, so those are a sample of what are the, what the kids experience throughout the world language here. Songs are like intramural parts, games such as Balthazar, Pictionary, Around the World, to name a few. Presentational activities including role plays, kits, puppet shows, fashion shows, shopping excursion, etc. Immersion activities where only the target language is used, and this happens through surveys, interviews, and social situations. Writing activities, café au lait, which is students engage in writing essays only in the target language. They design menus, write stories, comic strips, projects about language and cultural researches. They also attend FLIM performances that ties in with cultural, you know, with topics that we study in class. Total physical response stands also for students, you know, react to a verbal cue and perform the action. Interactive audio and visual activities, students listen and show understanding of listening and viewing activities, and we're gonna show you other samples of that student work. E-Practice stands for games, drills, puzzles, and facts that students access online, and they really help students improve their skills in the target language. So we're gonna start by showing evidence in the areas of speaking, reading, writing, and listening. This is, you know, the immersion activities that I was talking about, and our goal is to get students to be proficient in speaking. Student engagement in immersion activities, they do interviews, dialogue, and only the target language is spoken at this time. Proficiency in speaking, this is another way for students to show speaking practices, and this is an integrated fashion show as part of learning about clothing and description. Another way to show student performance, students dress up in their favorite profession and perform, and describe in the target language their clothing and what they do for work, and only in the target language. And this is followed by a writing piece, which we're gonna show later. This is coming up, proficiency writing. As you can see on the right side, this is like a paragraph written about that profession, and different ways students use art and describe and express themselves in writing. And it varies from, it gets, you know, really advanced as they advance in that grade level.
Proficiency in listening and comprehension, so we try to use a target language as much as we can. We stimulate the students to understand two different clues, that what are we trying to say, and then also, for instance, the bingo can be done only in target language. They also have to draw any word that we say or they give the answers. But also, in middle school, we just purchased two programs, Aventura and Te Pranché. And the most important thing for us is they have, they are loaded with multimedia activities, lots of listening activities, and lots of videos that we think that is very important for the students to be exposed with other language, target language speakers other than us.
Okay, so this is an overview of what's going on at the elementary level in terms of speaking, listening, singing, TPR, you know, across the board. It's just a snapshot of what's going on. And our next goal is reinforced learning of general curriculum content, just connecting with other content area to reinforce learning. In this slide, students make grapes as part of learning about France's food specialty. And also, they connect to other areas about food, measuring, and all, you know, these things.
The Spanish students were also, they did a research about the most important or popular foods in Latin America and Spain, and they made the different foods, and they brought them, and also, they have a class in the kitchen, and they cook in our school. Reinforced learning of general curriculum content.
Through interdisciplinary units, we try to connect with other content areas such as science, geography, social studies, math, and art, and show students that they're not learning the language just to speak it, but it's really useful for them when they connect to other areas. And there are a lot of ahas when they kind of, and they transfer the task to other content area, and then they apply it to their world language classroom. This is another slide showing students how they're transferring their skills from other content areas and how they're, you know, using them in different classrooms. They're designing game, educational games, which helps them reinforce their target language skills, and they rate the game using, it's like a cumulative type of a project, and they did a really wonderful job. Every year, it's amazing.
Acquire an understanding of and appreciation for other languages.
Okay, so language and culture are really intertwined, we cannot separate them, and we start students early on exposing them to the target cultures. So this is a slide showing first grade exploring the Eiffel Tower and where it's located. And this is really bring us to a deeper or advanced, you know, way of looking at things. In the, in this slide, some of the graders share their learning and artifacts about France's major monuments, figures, and landmarks. Not only they do the study, research, but also, we connect, as I was saying, to other area. They have to do like an art piece or artifact and, you know, explore it the way, you know, they feel really comfortable.
In that slide, we see those two big celebrations that we do at the school. One is the Dia de los Muertos, and the other one is Cinco de Mayo. And also, we invite the students from French, and they come to the classroom. So it's something that we constantly do with Zelphacasti. We try to expose the French or Spanish students to what is happening in the other language life. So in that, in that case, the French students were our guests, and we showed them what, the way we celebrate.
Okay, talking about the FLIM trips earlier, we've attended many trips, and what we do is we try to connect it to, you know, what you're learning and make meaning out of what they're seeing and learning. And they, as a follow-up of the, you know, the show, students engage in many different activities and created, you know, different artifacts that connect them with, you know, their learning. Some of them performed, others did, you know, illiteracy, like a folk tale, a story, and they acted up. Others did painting or sculptures. They were really into it. And others use technology to demonstrate their learning.
Sixth graders always do, we all, when we talk about language, we always talk about the culture of our countries. In sixth grade, they do a big research project where they adopt a country, and they do different mini projects, and at the end of the year, they make a big presentation, and then invite the parents, and they bring food, and it's done at the same time, French and Spanish. So this is a sample of what we did last year, when the students are showing their projects for, about their countries.
Well, I went too fast, but, oops. Okay, so in these slides, we're gonna show you evidence of language growth, a video clip from first grade, and it's take, it's a dialogue learned by the third week, which means the third class in the language program. A snapshot of what fifth graders, as they, you know, moved in the program, what they're able to do, basically real-life experiences. And the third one, we skipped a level, but, you know, this is what we can do with the time that we're allowed today. Eighth graders going on a shopping excursion, so they set up a classroom like a shopping, like a boutique, they ask for the price, decide what to buy, and we're gonna, you know. Hopefully, there is a speaker. A speaker, we didn't pay attention to that. Yeah. All right. Okay, cool. So they design menus at this as well? Okay, well, I mean, the sound is not perfect, but we're gonna transfer to the shopping excursion? Right, well, in this slide, they price the items, they ask for the price, they state the price, and they comment on the item they're purchasing. I mean, we couldn't fit longer dialogues, but this is like just a flavor of, you know, how students, evidence of language growth from first grade to eighth grade, and, you know, of course, we have much more than that, but this is what we're really got today. So we'd like to let you know that based on our experience, there are tons of research out there, and we definitely believe in all what's going on, we're always up to date, but based on our own experience, we believe that every child is very capable of learning another language.
Learning another language improves students' academic skills across all the curriculum.
Early exposure to another language contributes to the development of a functional level of proficiency, at least functional.
And something very important, and as we are preparing 21st century citizens. So for us, this is Q, very important.
So learning another language is a 21st century skill that will prepare our students to interact effectively with others in a global society. So.
Stephanie!
We're ready for any questions, comments, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I have one. So at the younger grade levels, the students take both languages.
Yes.
At the higher grade levels, they take one.
Mm-hmm.
When is that switch?
The switch is at sixth grade. They follow one language, six, seven, eight.
Can you talk about your own experience of learning a language, and then I'm wondering if you share that with your students?
Definitely, they, we're also, we're always one of the source of information, sharing our experiences with students, how we learned English as our second language, or perhaps close to third. And they're always, you know, very amazed that we make them feel that we're in, we are in the same situation, in the same boat, and we're all learning. And, you know, I always tell them, it's okay to make mistakes. I still make mistakes in English, but, and I welcome any feedback if I, you know, you feel like that is something that's mispronounced. And I think that kind of, you know, feeling laid back and making the students feel like we're, we're learning, we're both learners, makes them feel more comfortable, and we're really seeing a lot of positive attitude. If, you know, I should say, 100% of the students have that positive attitude, they walk in, they wanna learn. And I think it's really, you know, the way that, you know, the language is conveyed to them. I'm not sure, you know, how do you want me to explain my own experience learning another language? Well, I grew up learning both languages at the same time. My first language, or native, native is Arabic, but since starting three, at three years old, we went to immersion schools, all in French. And after graduation from high, from college, it was all in French. And I always shared with my students that, you know, I started learning English in sixth grade, and that wasn't enough for me. I wish I started earlier, and this is how it pays off. So, yeah, I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, no, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Because one of the things that we've heard from the community is that it's not enough at the early ages, and then, you know, depending on how dollars get spent, where should the emphasis be? And I'm not asking you to necessarily weigh in on that now, but those are the questions that come in our direction.
Well, definitely, I mean, it, you know, we only have students for, you know, once a week for one and twos, but it's really paying off. It's definitely not enough, but it's just, it's embedded in our curriculum, they're loving it. And as a matter of fact, at the, you know, open house, we got, had lots of parents turn over, and they were just there to share their, you know, experiences with their kids, singing, talking, since, you know, day one. So I'm sure they wanted more, and we hope to expand it at least two or three times a week at the first and second, and move up. So, yeah, I understand where they're coming from. But it pays off, I mean, even once a week, it's, we're seeing success there.
I agree with Zelphacasti, the way I learned Spanish, Spanish when I was a baby. But English, I started also in sixth grade, and I agree with her that having the students exposed from first grade, I think that is amazing, that this is the only school that still do that, and I feel that the kids are so lucky, not only having a, the possibility of learning a second language, but also to be able with a person who is native, because they get used to the accent and the cultural differences, so they, their minds open. Sometimes the kids, the kids are, can you speak in English? And like, yeah, I'm speaking in English, but because they are getting used to the accent, and I think that is good, that the kids get exposed to different settings that they did compare in their houses or in other places. So the diversity that I get in our classroom, I think that is very important to continue exposure there.
Thank you for coming, Anna.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry I came in late, it was great, but I do wanna say that I really appreciate the, how you weave in the culture more than just teaching a language. I think that's terrific, so.
Yeah, that would be very hard to separate it, because it's, this is what we transmit, that is our personal experience, talking about the music, the food, how the country looks like, that we don't have seasons, or we do, it's all that part, and they love it. This is what they get more excited about when we start to show them pictures.
And not only, you know, personal experience, not how we learn, but also sharing, you know, facts from other countries, from our travels, from things that we bring back. They get really interested, and they wanna learn more and know more, and time runs out. So we're seeing really a big improvement in, you know, attitude and, you know, the demand on learning more versus, you know, when I first started 13 years ago, I was only teaching, you know, fifth only once a week, and six, seven, eight. And when we started to go down in the grades, you know, the whole cycle have changed, and I could, I could see the growth, and we hope to maintain that and to increase it. It's a huge, huge difference. I lived through that, and I can speak about this. It's amazing how that changed. You know, I'm now having students that I had in third grade, and I can see them now in eighth grade, and they're really into what they're doing. They come back, and they're very responsible, they turn in their assignment, you know, what can I do, I use this class. It's, it's amazing. Yeah, so, we're so proud of them, and we hope to maintain this great program. Any other questions and comments?
Do you ever have students in high school come back and?
Yes, yes, yeah, very frequently, they have like half days or something else, and they look for us, and, and as a matter, I had a student recently who said, my sister is taking, sticking to world language, you know, throughout high school, and I'm like, wow. And, yeah, and during graduation, I see former students, and they share their experience, you know, getting through AP. Yeah, definitely.
There is another part, when the students go to six to eight in Spanish, they get, if they complete the credits in the placement test, they will come to CBU in Spanish too. So, and because they only need two years of language for college, sometimes they say, okay, I'm going to take Spanish one in Heinsburg, Spanish two in CBU, and still I have two more years to do Chinese or French. So the kids really have like options, and I have some students from last year that they are telling me, and this year, I have one, five, sixth grade student that she's already made her plan, and say, okay, I'm going to get her placement test, and I'm going to study this, and I'm going to study Chinese, and I'm like, okay, let's do it. So it's great to see how they are all excited about learning languages, so I think that is amazing, that offer here in the district.
Tienen alguna otra pregunta?
Oui oui.
Gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I did like how you connected the actful and the common core. You know, that's a nice display.
We have been doing a lot of training about that, by, we have, the last service, we have, we are doing like one-on-one programs, we go to the class, and working on that, because we need to have it very clear now where we're going.
So should I look off here? Yeah.
All right, again, thank you both for that presentation on world language. Moving on in our agenda, 5.0, Reports to the Board. 5.1, Principles Report.
So I hope you all had a chance to figure this into a specific packet. If not, I just want to highlight a couple of things. One is the, we hope it will become an annual, we hope it will become an annual tradition at Heinsburg, is the kindergarten welcoming ceremony, which was just beautiful, thanks to Barb Spalding and her eighth grade students. They had a presentation where they, all the eighth grade kids each called up a kindergarten student, one at a time, and gave them a carnation and a poem. And if you haven't taken the time to read this poem, they wrote it themselves. I guess it's not really a poem, I don't know what you would call it. It's kind of a remembrances of all the things that they have to look forward to. But I, as you know, haven't been in the school, but reading it, I just started crying. It was just so lovely what the eighth graders came up with, and what their memories were, and how they want the kindergarten kids to, the experience they want them to have as they go through this wonderful. as they go through this wonderful school. And it was really cute because the, so the eighth graders, you know, of course, are really big, and the five-year-olds are really small, and then they try and sit down next to each other where the kindergarten student was sitting, and there really wasn't enough room. And then they started talking, because you want them to talk, but then we had to ask them to be quiet, because we couldn't hear the other kids. So it was, but it was, the whole thing was just very sweet, and the seventh and eighth grade chorus sung a beautiful song, and it was lovely. And then in June, the kindergarten students are preparing to say goodbye to their eighth grade friends. So, whoops, we're hoping it will become a tradition at our school.
Did it in the gym?
Yes.
So like hundred and twenty, twenty-three kids all together.
Yeah, yeah, it was just lovely.
And they got paired?
Uh huh, ahead of time. I don't know how Barb did that. And there were some siblings that, of course, were paired together, and I don't know, they didn't, I don't know if it was random, or there was probably some planning about that.
Some double studentship.
Yeah. Yes, there are. But it was really lovely. It's, you know, one of those things that makes Heinsburg such a great school, real community school. We had a lot of police officers and firefighters in the building, and they stayed for lunch, and it was, it was lovely. They had brought the fire trucks, and police officers were hanging, handing out bags for...
Thank you, because what I heard last night, I didn't understand that it was planned.
Oh.
I just, I just heard that they were at school that day.
Yes, they were.
Well, I got a call at about nine o'clock, and it was from our fifth grade teacher, and said, hey, Jeff, do you know if the fire trucks are going to be outside our window all day or just in the morning? Because we're taking kneecaps in it. So we, we had, we had to move them.
This is really funny, because I go, of course, I don't know these people. So I'm go out, and this really nice firefighter was there, and I was like, well, do you think you can move it up here? It's a little distracting. So we go to look at where we could move it, and he goes, it's a big mud hole there. And I'm like, well, maybe you could put the tires there. I mean, I don't really know. I'm trying to figure it out. And then one of our teachers comes out, whose husband is, works in the fire, I don't know, he's got something to do with it, and she's like, okay, move the truck up here. That's enough, like, you just figured it out. I'm like, okay. Trying to negotiate it a little bit, but, yeah, it was great. The kids are so excited, and they're still wearing their fire hats today. They're so adorable.
I have one with a fire hat, and I, in the car, she makes the fire sound. It's awesome.
Okay, really? So it was great. It was lovely to have them there for lunch. And I think we wanted to address our science kneecap results.
Yeah, I, I just put a little blurb, but I am so proud of our eighth grade students last year. And having said that, I, I will, fourth grade, we still have some work to do. The CSSU averages at sixty-six percent, we're at sixty-two. We dropped down seven percent in that area. CSSU dropped down four percent. And, and I don't want to gloss that over. We know that we have work to do, and, but our eighth graders just nailed it out of the park. They went from being fifty-four percent proficient last year to sixty-nine percent. It's a fourteen percent jump. CSSU's jump on average was six percent, and that average is fifty-eight percent. So we're eleven percentage points higher than that. And then Vermont, the Vermont average is thirty-three percent. So we've more than doubled proficiency in eighth grade. So I'm really proud of that.
When you say they went from fifty-eight to sixty-nine, do you mean the eighth graders last year versus the eighth graders the year before?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and you, I, I'm always careful comparing cohorts. This was a particularly challenging group of students. I mean, so I, I didn't forecast that, that kind of a jump. And I attribute a lot of it to the compartmentalizing of, of science and math, and I think that the work that our science teachers across the border are doing is paying off, but it's just, it's really cool to see how well they're doing. Seventy percent is huge, so.
Right, that's great. Something to celebrate.
Yes.
Yep. And then I think you had asked last time for the enrollment to look a little bit differently, so I should have listed what it is, but you could figure it out. I'm sure the first number there is the number of students, the second is the number of teachers, and the third row is the class size. Does that make sense?
Makes sense now, thank you.
Yep, okay, yeah, I should have put that in there. And then also, there is an article we thought you might be interested in. I don't come across kids' seven days, that particular paper, as much as you do the regular seven days. So I didn't know if you would come across it, but you'll see Paul Lasher is in, quoted in the article, and they came out and interviewed Heinsburg and talked a little bit about that. So I thought you'd be interested in that.
I thought it was a great synopsis on the iPad initiative, and I, I thought they did a really nice job explaining the, the reasons behind the move.
Good. And then you have the report from our wonderful Pi group at the end. Any questions? Great.
I just want to say, I'm not working on my phone, I'm pulling up the internet facility, because I don't have my packet with me.
I'll make, I'll make a comment that my daughter's in kindergarten, and she loved the whole eighth grade kindergarten. She came home raving about it, so it was, it was, it was nice.
I was like, my kid's in eighth grade, and I didn't hear a word about it, so.
That's the difference.
That's interesting.
So there you have it.
That's the difference, right?
Enjoy, enjoy those kindergartens.
They were really mesmerized by the eighth graders, and all the, the eighth graders were all really well behaved.
All right. Anything further on principals report? Moving on then to five point two, CSSU debrief. You might have been the only one there.
I was a parent.
I might have been the only one there. Bill came, Bill came in for the common topic, and therefore the executive session. So I'd say there were, there are a couple pieces that I'd want to highlight. In the central office leadership team report, Elaine wanted to note that the superintendents voted yesterday to defer decisions about the calendar. It's not going to be proposed for 2014, 15. The forum is still on for tomorrow night. There's a lot of energy and talking about time and learning and relationships, and so that will keep on going. Another piece that I'd want to highlight, and Elaine will put something in a report for next month, is how well our schools did with our AYP planning and professional development and the work with kids. And all of the schools just did dynamite, and it's not in your central office leadership team report. Elaine just got notice about it, and, you know, increases of fifteen to twenty percent for Charlotte. And Williston, third best in the state in closing the gap. So the school, the schools are waiting on how much they're closing the gap and how rapidly, and, and so you'll get more information about that. But kudos to all of our administrators in the SU, because they really work hard in a coordinated professional development program. The other piece that we probably want to think about, and if you have input to the CSSU board members, the CSSU board next month will be asked to vote on whether or not paraeducators should be hired at the central office letter, level, or keep it at the local level. Currently, that's local. The Act 153, 156 plan that was adopted by legislators asks for supervisory, requires supervisory unions to do the hiring of special education staff. The clarification at the end of the legislative session is that paraeducators, that decision can be made locally. And so our CSSU board will need to decide on whether or not to keep that as a local hiring versus central office. And the recommendation from administrators will be to leave it as it is. So questions about that piece? So the CSSU board will be voting on that next month, most likely. Then we had a coordinated school health presentation. Megan did a great job with that, just looking at the, there are eight different components, from personnel to curriculum to connection with communities and so forth. And Bill, did you want to add anything related to that?
Did you remember?
It was, I thought, it was a good presentation, and, and I think we need to continue to revisit that. So maybe we'll try to remember to get that on a retreat agenda for the CSSU board or, or all board members. And then we had executive session for negotiations, but I think those are the highlights. Anything else, Bill? No? Okay. Thank you.
The next two things are placeholders on our agendas that are always there, and because of lack of knowledge, I had hesitation in removing them. So what's, the first one up is facilities committee. So I don't know if there's anything that facilities committee wants to discuss.
Not that I know of.
I will say that the white building, the painting project is, is now complete. So it took a little bit longer than we expected, but they got the job done, and it looks great.
On budget.
I believe it's under budget, yeah.
That's great news.
Did you see me out there with a paintbrush?
It wouldn't have been under budget then.
At least the eighth graders weren't out there all doing it, you know?
All these questions have consequences.
I'm sorry, Colleen.
Well, when this was first discussed, there was a question of whether or not the lead abatement and prior painting had, if that had been abated previously.
Almost.
Okay.
So they did some soil testing in, in the summer, and I think the way that they do the soil, if this is what you're, we, we had done some soil testing to see if the asbestos was, or not asbestos, the lead paint was still there. And they take sections throughout the, the area right next to the white building, and in one section, there was still a trace amount.
Yeah, because I thought I remembered that we had done something with that before, but we couldn't remember, so I didn't know.
Yeah, we were going to put a...
Well, there's lead paint on that building, and it's never going to be...
It'll be there forever.
Yeah, right, the cloud is totally off, to get rid of the lead paint on it. Right.
So we were going to put the nursery school playground in that area, but we can't because of the results that we got back.
All right. On that, five point four, technology committee. Is that you?
Met today.
Wow. What kind of report do you have, Mr. Baker?
Everybody left early. Everyone left early. So there was a discussion about the iPads, and they're going to give kids the ability to download apps on their own on their iPads, and then there'll be a monitoring, a monitoring, so a kid downloads an app, and the IT folks have the ability to monitor the, the iPads to see what apps are downloaded. There was a discussion around that. I don't think any, do we make, make a conclusion on that?
Just informational.
The other thing, it's minor thing, is that they're going to shut down all the computers in the stations at five o'clock every day now. These, sometimes they'd stay in all night, in an effort to save power, and also to, for security-wise, you know, to shut those down. And there was a bit of a discussion about, believe it or not, headphones, that headphones are getting broken in the labs, and are we going to ask kids to bring their own headphones? And so that's kind of up in the air, so we don't really know. The best way, they, they had some ideas on how to keep them from getting broken so much, but it's posed a little bit of a problem, so that was another discussion topic, and I could put my two cents in on that. But the, I think the big thing was, is that the CSSU IT department is developing a technology expectations document that they're going to give to all the kids. I think they were talking about there's some legalities around having someone sign it, why they can't do that, but it's going to be an ex, a document that all kid, K through eighth is reviewed. Obviously, at the eighth grade level, it'll be a little different discussion than the K level, but if we have access with technology, what's expected of you, behavior, so on and so forth. And I, I, that's going to be worked on, I think, next week, and I hope to have something soon around that. But I thought, I encourage them to get that in place. I think that was it.
Thank you for doing that, though. I did that committee years ago for a long time, and it was really a lot of fun, believe it or not.
Really?
It's an easy, well, unless you say easy, it's, it's, it's a pleasure. There's not a lot of...
Well, it's good thinking.
Who's on it?
Myself, David Rass, Jeff.
Jessica.
Of course. And...
I don't, who's the IT? I don't know who are.
Uh.
Jessica.
Jessica.
Right.
All right. Moving on to discussion matters, six point one, SU purchase services. It looks like there's a PowerPoint in the presentation. Were you going to walk us through that, Bob?
I can do whatever the board would like. I can do the executive summary and take your right to the inclusion. I can drown down for, for quite a length of time eloquently, or, you want me to do the executive thing, and then we can do questions from the... This is the annual requirement that those of us who provide services to you and your excellent school need to know rather early on whether we're on the, the target to provide services. My attention would focus on the chart that, that's at the end of the pitch, that says these are the purchase services you're asking for. And we principally need to know, this is Megan, Molly, and I who provide you these services. Under our responsibility, need to know whether you still want those services next budget year, and need to know that rather early in the budget process to do a good job for you all. So in Heinsburg, you elect to participate in ITCY, food, transportation, I'm reading across the top, family infant toddler program. It's burst to three services to kids. Psycholog, psychologists, occupational therapy, English language learners, and ELP. And you're one of the schools that checks every box and heads our way for help. If you don't want to head our way, you need to let us know rather quickly. So that's the ten thousand foot summary.
Can you remind us, the food piece is just our director of food services, is that correct?
The food, the food piece is, is bringing together the leadership of the five cafeterias within the SU, so that they do things possibly a little more intelligently than they would otherwise being on their own. All the costs that are assigned to you are associated with your cafeteria. You, you don't pick up any of my costs, and we are careful to make sure that things are split by cafeterias, not with some other algorithm. So on, on your budgeted food cost from, from CSSU would be the cost of Deb, the cost of your employees, and, and any food and expense costs you had associated with operating the cafeteria. So this is a discussion matter.
But you said you need us, you need to know something.
Yeah, and Bob's notes, it says, action matter, question mark. Prior years, it would be an action matter, but you, you, we're flexible. If you, if, well, we're flexible. I trust that you'll bring to our attention early if there's a change in your thinking. And these two would need to know that rather quickly as well.
I don't think there's a change. Does anybody see any purpose for changing anything? We're going to stick to the plan, right? Is that what you need me?
That's, that's good by me. You can move on, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Speaking of moving on, I have to go find that page again. Budget forum, six point two, budget forum preparation. Are we still a go for November fourth? I, I see that, are you chair, president?
Yeah, co-chair.
Co-chair of Pi has joined us, and you're nodding your head, Kate.
I'm a little concerned about all the things we want to try to get done in early November, but that's really our problem. I think it makes sense to have this forum on the fourth.
Okay.
So we're going to try to work around and figure out another way to everything else that we want to do.
And can someone remind me at what time the budget forum would be on the fourth?
So, we communicated that would work for seven PM.
Okay.
Is that okay by everybody else that...
Where do you have it?
We're going to do it, we're going to do it in the flex space right at, the Pi is going to, Pi is going to meet from six to seven with their normal agenda, which includes the common core standards and presentation, and then we'll... which includes the common core standards and presentation and then we'll clip it at seven o'clock to a board meeting as a public forum.
Okay.
In an effort to drive attendance.
And I would try to do a good job of getting the word out about that meeting. I noticed Shelburne's PI group or PTO on their Facebook page did a promotion saying, this is what's happening and I was like, oh, good idea. So I'll work on trying to get that word out, more than I have in the past.
The thing about, can I say something?
Yeah, please.
The thing about this meeting is that I do think that often people get to January and they think, oh, this is our time to weigh in. But if there's stuff that they're thinking about, it's good to know upfront so that we can really give it some consideration. So that's why this meeting is so important and we haven't been very successful at communicating that to parents, community people, that it really is a critical time to bring information out.
I, I think that accentuates the need to get the word out about this, but maybe that's one of the opening parts of the presentation is an outline for those in attendance of our budget calendar so that people realize, look, this is really when we start thinking about it because in January, it's, you know, almost too late because we're voting to present a budget at the end of January.
We made all of our assumptions, all our assumptions have been made and-
So thank you for helping us.
Thank you. So in turn, I don't think we're gonna meet then as a Board before that meeting, so do we want to put any sort of presentation together? Will you and Jeff assist with that?
Yeah, I guess I would need to know traditionally what it's looked like.
Excellent point on tradition. Traditionally, where we, we go next is we get you a copy of last year's presentation and you as Board Chair or somebody who's more passionate about the whole thing other than the Board Chair helps enhance the slides and material for next year. I can easily pull out of the historical binder, last year's pitch and get it to all of you or you, Keith, whichever is your preference and we can start there.
I don't have any problem with all of the Board being on the receiving end. I'm happy to coordinate comments from Board members with me as a funnel, working with Allegra to put a presentation together and I'm planning on being there, subject to me remembering to pick up my phone in my office and put it on my calendar. But, you know, I'm happy to be part of the presentation if need be.
Okay.
The one thing that, that I think is really, really important is that we do create this as a community conversation and input and it's not us just presenting and then that hopefully that this is the time to really gather some community input, so. We've done that in the past where it's been better received. I think the past couple of years, it's been more, this is where we are because it's been such a tight budget year.
You could ask, depending on how many people are there, this, this would work.
There'll be, there'll be five.
Really?
No, I think there'll be more.
But you could have some-
I think there'll be fifteen.
You could have some focus questions that, and get into small groups where one of you is at each of the tables maybe or somehow and have it that way. Sometimes people feel more com- and then you could report out, people feel more comfortable sometimes in smaller groups and depending on how big it is.
It will definitely be small, but I think having some focus questions is an excellent idea.
Right. I think we've done, we've done that before, I don't know if I can pull up those questions.
I thought what I'd do is get you not only your own, but two others
That's good.
that, that maybe touch on that a little more closer. And then you can beg, borrow and steal whichever techniques seem to resonate best.
Okay.
Is there, do you talk about the tax?
I don't talk, but I believe, I believe Mr. Gudrow did, did touch a little bit on kind of the tax setting, but not, I mean, we know nothing about what they may do.
Right.
This is the state by that time, but I think we tended to pay a pretty dismal picture as to the financial ability of the Board to do things dramatically different relative to adding more cost, if I remember right.
Yep.
Well, the problem is, is we can't, with sequester and shutdown and all that, hopefully it's resolved by then, but it's a whole other piece of the pie that we'll throw with monkey mention if it works, so.
Everybody will be grumpy because our primary tax bills are due that day.
Surely they're happening.
November fifteenth, I think.
Wow.
Nice context.
Good job, bros, at least putting with record and the citizen and all that announcing, so how's that work? What are we gonna do to publicize it?
Wow, that's a good question. I can certainly put something on Front Porch Forum.
Does Front Porch Forum, is it now all of Heinsburg?
It's now all of Heinsburg, but I have two accounts, I have, I have a school board account and a personal account. So if I post on the school board account, it says school board member.
Right.
Are we, are we competing with town meeting, I mean, whatever, the select, no, 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 the select board meeting, do they meet on Monday night?
Yeah, but every other one, I don't know if it's that one.
I don't know, we're meeting.
Yeah, it's hard to know, yeah, we didn't check that.
Cindy will warn your meeting as is legally required.
So we could put it in, we can put it in the background.
Yep.
And if we could kind of prominently place it on the web pages as a coming in event.
The record or citizen would be good.
The record's hard because of, I mean, but I can send something to the citizen.
Do you want to call, call them or, that would be great, Kathy, thank you.
Send myself an email reminder.
First, and the select board meets the first and third Monday of the month, so yes, I think the answer to that would be yes. There's, there's a select board meeting at seven o'clock on the fourth.
Ah, it can be sometimes.
Yeah.
I think though, it's, I think it's, we kind of have a captive audience on the fourth at the school, so I tend to, I think we stick with that and just-
I think the coordination with the PI meeting corrals a larger potential audience and it's worth that risk.
So I think it might be helpful too to have an end time, because some of those people come to the PI meeting with kids and there's babysitting, so, and I don't know how that would-
I'm talking about an hour.
Kids usually an hour, seven days.
Yeah, it's usually an hour.
Okay, so you'll, so that's what we'll-
Should we all for babysitting, did I hear that as a question?
Well-
PI babysitter will still be there.
The PI babysitter will be there, you can talk to your PI captain about that.
I think that's important to publicize.
Yeah. And there's usually a little bit of food at the PI meeting too.
We, we remember what happens.
We could sell pies.
We could.
Could be a fundraiser.
Stop. Um, Allegra, when you do have those focus questions, is anything you can share with me? Because I think some parents like to think about things in advance and if they could have something to go on.
That's a good idea.
Like, what, what kind of things should I be thinking about when I go to this forum?
Okay, that is a good point, okay.
What do, I mean, and that's the question for us, what do we want people to be thinking about and looking at input?
We, um-
I think probably more you are out of the room.
We'll discuss with Mr. Mason that he is gonna collect materials from prior budget forums as well as some other neighboring districts to jog our memory and thought process on what we want to present and what we might, and think of some focused questions to talk to the audience about. So hopefully that will be the exercise to get us and them thinking about what do we want to talk about.
I'd like to know, do you want to be specific or do you want, you know, what do you value about Heinsburg Community School? Do you want it to be, because that, you know, a broad based question gives you a lot of information too. Or do you want it to be more specific and maybe it's a combination of that?
I like the phrasing of that, what do you value about the school? Because there's a, a good chance that we'll be faced with some difficult decisions, we want to make sure that we really honor
Right.
those values.
All right, so we will look for those things in our emails in the coming days. And prepare again, November fourth at seven o'clock in the flex space for the annual Budget Forum. Six point three, Communications Board Corners, that's another placeholder that we have and I was hesitant to remove it. We have talked for a couple of times now about Udora Frazier from Charlotte writing something about negotiations. Do we have any awareness?
She's, she's gonna do that.
Okay. So I'm not sure process wise how it's gonna get vetted and then released, but I think the intent is to have it come from many, if not all, school boards.
The intent was not to have the five, five boards in the, in the union disseminating different stories to the community. So we wanted to have a cohesive, single voice, so that was the intent behind it.
So the byline will say, excuse me, will say something to the effect of that this is from all the school boards.
Correct.
Um, in the association.
Anyas.
Cindy is gonna, the, the way we launched it last night is Udora was drafting something, sending it to Cindy. Cindy was going to go through it again, share it with Lisa from the association and then, well, maybe, maybe it's not from both, but that it's run by the association before it goes public. Whomever it comes from, it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
But they would be in agreement and it's just basically, you know, process. This is where we are.
At this point. The first one.
Okay, great, we will keep our eyes out for that as well. Six point four, United Church of Heinsburg, what's that?
Oh, I'm sorry, keep going, you're right.
United Church of Heinsburg property, this, I think, is a carryover from last month and again, for the reasons I stated, last month, I'm gonna recuse myself and sit this one out, so I will hand it over to our Vice Chair, Lisa, who I remember is our Vice Chair this month. And Lisa gets to run on this one.
This is just discussion, carryover?
I thought we talked about it. Were we talking about it again? I thought we talked about it.
We couldn't really mess with the chat.
Well-
For my benefit, you-
You might want to look-
Do the wetlands change?
You might, you might want to look at the minutes from last month, which asked for some follow up.
So I think Bob, I think Bob was not here and he, he would like for us to have the discussion again. So Kathy, would you like to share your thoughts?
Well, apparently Bob has more information on that.
Uh, no, I, I generally have no information, but other than, I was to be prepared for this to come off the table or the conversation to resume. The end game here is you have a property owner adjacent to your school who has asked for your input on the fact that they're in the process of possibly considering selling the property and if the school board has some reason to get involved early, then they'd like to know that and if the school board has no interest, they'd like to know that. So they've just asked for input from you five.
And I, I, there is, in that I was supposed to get documents from the early, late, mid nineties, some, you know, something. When we were looking at properties prior to the ninety-seven addition, we needed to have more contiguous property if we could before we could put that addition, which is now the middle school, on the building. And that was one of the properties we looked at and there's a report and I intended to scan it and send it to you.
The question surrounded, was it land that you could use, is it all wetlands?
Well, as, as my distinguished lawyer friends would say, it depends on what you mean by the term used. It is, it is significantly wetland.
Correct.
It is unlikely you can put anything in the wetland easily.
Correct.
Let me tell you, in these days, post-stating, it's almost impossible.
Okay, I, I speak in-
At the time, it was not suitable for a parking lot, let alone recreation fields or buildings. So it would, it would have, it would have just been additional land.
So can I clarify with you, Bob?
Yeah.
You, you framed it differently, the question differently, than we heard it last month. Last month, I thought the question was, are we interested in purchasing this land? But you, this time you framed it as, are we interested in having input, which are, to me, two different things. Is that what, is that what you intended?
I'm not sure I understand the distinction, other than, no one is looking for you tonight to commit to a purchase of property. The school, the church is interested in doing what's right in the community and if they should be having the conversation with the Board, they wanna kind of plan for that. If the Board has no interest, their plan will go elsewhere. So that's, it's kind of informal input, but it's intended to, to flush out whether it's, yeah, where they, where they should go next.
My gut feeling is if they were gonna sell it and we wanted it at their price, they'd rather have us buy it because it's good for the community versus someone else, so they're giving us, informally, kind of first refusal, but not, maybe that's not the right way to put it, but they want to see what our level of interest is.
Right.
I, I have not spent an exhaustive number of hours or dollars on your part to investigate the property. It is significantly wetland, it is unlikely you can do anything with the wetland other than own it. Uh, there's another portion of it that is within the floodplain. It is okay for you to build within the floodplain, but you need to understand it is in the floodplain, so you, 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 it's a general rule, you don't put buildings in the floodplain and you probably will-
If you use federal dollars, you don't put any building in the floodplain.
You probably will not get insurance on the building if you put it in the floodplain regardless of whether you're using federal-
Heinsburg is up, has, Heinsburg's zoning makes it, Heinsburg's really pushing developers to totally stay out of the floodplain, even a parking lot. So I think it would be lovely walking trails and then this, unfortunately, the piece that's usable, developable, is far away from the school. And really, it probably would be buying a piece of land to have walking trails and maybe a soccer field that was pretty far away from-
Is the piece that's far away usable for like a soccer field or something like that, Kathy?
Years ago, it was not.
But the whole, you know, I, I live on, I, I drive down Silver Street every day and when it gets wet, almost this whole field is underwater.
It's underwater.
Right, I think only that, that must be only-
It's like it's so-
So you'd have to walk down.
And there's a long history of that, because if you talk to people who've lived in the community for years, they talk about being able to skate for miles, you know, that-
Right.
And they, on the ice of the flooding.
So I think if you had a pocket full of money, was your personal property, you might buy it to say, hey, I don't want anything else being there, but we don't think we have that, so.
I mean, what has, what others, I mean, we shouldn't completely dismiss it because there are some really interesting schools that are near wetlands that, you know, might, might build a boardwalk over something and be able to use the wetlands for science and ecology and so forth and that is intriguing. So I wouldn't completely dismiss it, but we should be clear that that's the most likely use of it.
We could do a bond vote just on this, that'd be interesting.
I, yeah.
I mean-
Why, yeah, why not?
Alan, do you want it? How much is it?
If it didn't, if we didn't invest a lot of money.
Don't know, they haven't settled on a price to offer it to you.
But I think it's valued at around-
Sixty-eight thousand was the assessed value, but it might be higher or lower, so what the-
Well, now we should get careful of what we're saying in the, without going into executive session, but-
It might be a question to pose to the community and, as, but-
We could talk about it on November four, I don't know. I don't know, we could get more input on it, I guess.
It's not gonna be used for a recreation field or a parking lot or a building.
Probably not, well, it could be, if you want to walk that far, there's the piece you can work on, so.
Tough R is that, I can't get a sense of that from that.
This is that new house that you see kind of right in the-
Oh, down Silver Street?
You say it's a third of a mile from there, there, I'd guess quarter to quarter mile.
I see, yeah.
Shelburne Community School is built near wetlands, right? Do they, have they used those in any way?
What do you mean they're near a wetland?
Well, I mean, marshy areas and-
We've tried to get, not get rid of it, but when I first was there, I had, I had a nice duck pond out by- Get, not get rid of it, but um, when I first was there, I had, I had a nice duck pond out by, I could look out on from my office window. And we did a lot, spent a lot of money to unfortunately get rid of the duck pond, cause it um.
It was just a place that collected water.
Right, yeah, and that brings a lot of problems, that was really close to the school, I mean, it brought a lot of problems that way, but um.
To Kathy's earlier point, the property that that school was built on likely today might have been described as a wetland. And wasn't when the school was built.
Right, right.
But they didn't, doesn't Shelburne own another piece of property, did they sell that?
No, they still own the Long Meadow property.
Right, and I think there's been some talk of doing exactly what you've been talking about, but has not happened. They've owned that for a long time. I feel like the only way we'd buy it is if we just ask the community, do you wanna buy it, I'm, I'm not gonna put that in our budget.
No way.
Right, this year?
Yeah, it should be a community discussion, right?
Should we have that discussion on November four or raise that as part of our question?
Yeah, that's a good idea, it's something for people to chew on.
I guess it's, yeah, I think we need to have, have, this is how like from. This grouping that we're feeling convinced it's a worthwhile venture, but there might be some purpose for it.
Yeah.
That somebody could convince us.
And like, we're not, it's just, if the community wants, it'd be a good way to add it, but ask the question, if you want, if you want this, just make it a.
I'll walk it.
I'm going to say that you four have indicated it's not, uh, generally you're not convinced it's a worthwhile endeavor, but would like to get input from the community in some form. Uh, on whether it should be considered, is that what I just said?
About not worthwhile endeavor, doesn't. We have no immediate use or need for it or something like that.
Foreseen.
Foreseen, practical use.
We don't see a meeting facilities needs.
How about, that's pretty good too.
Or infrastructure needs.
Okay.
Okay.
The three of us will respond under the.
I'd like a gab over next to my Lucy.
Keep, keep dreaming. Ah, six point five budget process, budget buddies. So in the past four, three years, at least, we've had budget buddies who are community members. Participate in all of our budget discussions at our meetings throughout the budget process. And I guess the first question that I had in putting this on the agenda is what the feeling of the board is with respect to continuing to have budget buddies involved.
Love it.
Positive.
I liked the number that we had last year, I can't remember how we did it.
One each?
And we limited. We had another qualifier.
With one faculty member.
We had, we had at least one faculty member.
But no, no more.
School involvement, right?
All right.
I believe what you did last year was five of them, one parent, one faculty member and one community member, and then the other two, I believe you chose that discretion.
Okay.
Boy, that sounds very strategic.
Wow.
You guys are smart.
Paying attention, weren't you?
You guys are smart.
So, so I can piece together who the five were last year. Uh, with my notes, I know one of them is sitting to my immediate right, so that at the very least, there's an opening for one. I guess I can check with the other four and see if they're interested in continuing. I have been approached over the last nine months by several people who are, new people who are interested in doing it. Who've heard about the process as we've done it. So.
Um, budget buddies and interested budget buddies should be notified of the November fourth meeting.
Yes.
I think we should. I'm thinking that we should put a call out, I don't think those four from last year automatically get a slot, I don't think that's fair, I think we should. Put out a general call. And they can all submit their names, that's my feeling, I don't know how anyone else feels.
Last year for the um, faculty, I thought they chose their member?
No, I think Bob and I did.
Oh, okay, well, you can take care of it again this year.
Will you?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I do think, I agree that we should have some kind of posting, that we're a call for budget buddies and. So that it's not, so that people know they can apply or, I use that term very loosely.
Volunteer.
Volunteer, yes.
Express interest.
Express interest.
It's still listening.
How about if the posting?
Send a letter of interest or something.
The posting that I'm gonna put on Front Porch Forum and that Kathy is gonna talk to the citizen about. Notifies of the November fourth present, forum. Calls for anyone, what's that?
No, I'm gonna send myself another email.
Calls for uh, anyone, calls for, you know, self nominations for budget buddies during the process. And encourages any of those people that are interested to attend, any of those people that are interested in being budget buddies to attend the budget forum.
And I think we also say if we have the problem of having down the road more volunteers than slots, they can still come and give input and so on and so forth.
Didn't we, in, in addition to that, didn't we have some way of like submitting their name into the office or something and we kinda collected item, didn't we?
I thought last year we, we found our own budget buddies.
That was the year before?
And the year before.
I think it was the original year we did. And then we did more of an open call and that's when we ended up with like two to one budget buddies.
Right.
Maybe three to one.
Well, you know, I, I, I am not disfavoring an open call. And we'll see what kind of uh, interest it corners. I, I also am not opposed to having new people become involved in the process, because I've always viewed this as. Uh, a way for a community member to become more familiar with the work of the board and possibly get eventually them to run for the board. And I think the more people that we can expose to that, the better. And I'm very hopeful that some people that have served in budget buddy, as a budget buddy in the past. Like Mr. Baker, will follow in his footsteps and step up for a board position when there's one available. So Lisa, I do like your suggestion of. Having peop, well, I don't know, if I, if I say contact me as the board chair, if you're interested, would that work?
Yes.
I don't, I don't wanna throw it on, on the office.
Absolutely.
Some way for it to come back to us and. So last year we had five, or do we have five plus, we told last year as a teacher?
Think we had five total.
Five total, not five plus.
All right, any further thoughts?
Five, it was Larry, Tina, Paul, me and Patty, that's five.
My, my years are confused in my mind. Uh, six point six, select board, school board collaboration. So I mentioned the last time that Joe Colangelo had reached out to me to try to have the school board meet with the select board.
On November four?
Uh, no, um, by happenstance, I was at town hall one day and Joe was there, so we started looking at dates. And he proposed some in December. I said, we have budget meetings in December, so I have to check, and of course, the one he had proposed, we do have a budget meeting. So, which was December second, so I went back to him and said, what about December ninth? Because the select board, I think he told me, tends to meet, meet weekly in December. Um, so that would be, I think, a regularly scheduled meeting for them.
So what's being proposed, that you're gonna go to the select board and meet with the select board or?
No, that the five of, that there's a joint meeting of the select board and the school board.
And what would the agenda be?
That is to, to be determined, and that is to be determined as well. In the interim, I understand that Joe spoke to one or both of you.
Yes, great meeting.
Do you care to share with us?
It's just, you know, it's just informational and uh, we were able to pop some ideals off of him and he, to us and it just.
Talk about crosswalks?
Yeah, it's just nice to have that conversation.
Crossing guards.
Yeah.
He's a mentor in our school also, he's mentoring a student, which is great, yeah, so he's there weekly for that too. Yeah, it's wonderful.
I, I think the agenda for a joint meeting of the boards would have at least two agenda items that I can think of. Uh, sort of a big picture, what does each of our respective budgets look like, so that we each have a view of the overall. Tax ramifications to the extent we can figure, figure them out now might be to our townspeople. And now with our meeting on the same evening and having similar types of presentation. If there's any type of collaboration or, or uh, shared message that we can convey on that night in March. And I think at least with respect to that first budget item, since we will have had possibly two budget meetings by then, we might have at least a general idea of what we're looking at.
Well, we might wanna add, at some point, we probably even need to add to our own work plan. Um, some kind of forecast thing related to the build out of the village. And the impact on our school, cause. The, my understanding, the master, the next build out to the north of Patrick Brook is two hundred units of housing.
Oh.
And he, he did, he did begin to get into that and uh. And what was the question you asked, uh, there was not an audit, but um.
Oh, impact fee.
Impact, yeah. But it was just um. Heinsburg's not getting any smaller, so I think that's a great conversation to have in terms of.
The school's so awesome. Cause we know Shelburne has a significant impact. For both the rec department and the.
And the school.
Is it one for school, yeah?
Uh, for the high school.
Right.
The high school.
Yeah, but not for the community.
That's true, it's not, right?
But you have to have a, you have to have a building project to have impact fees.
Right, right.
You put a capital.
Yeah. They don't, they're not planning to build. I don't think.
But yeah, it's.
My building may not be quite enough of a backup plan.
Not anymore. I think it's worth the conversation, even. You know. We'd hate to both be in the dark if they're gonna go to bond for something or go to bond for something, don't wanna do it the same year, the same time or whatever, so it's. I think that some type of, opening some line of formal communication is worthwhile.
At one time, there was a um, a capital plan for the town of Heinsburg and I don't know where it is, it was like five, ten years out and.
They have one for um, kind of the roads and bridges and that, they have one like that, I don't know if they have.
Perhaps a public safety facility took a lot of attention, yeah.
So where are, are we gonna do this on the night or?
Well, I think there's two questions in that Lisa, there's the logistical one, are we gonna do it on the night? And that answer is, I think I'm waiting to hear from Joe and Jonathan Treffery, whether that works for them. I think there's the substantive question of whether this board is interested in doing that, which I don't know that we have a definitive answer to yet.
I'd like to, I'd like to have a, an agenda worked out before we commit to it, because everyone's just so busy. And it may be that you and Jonathan sit down and have a conversation, you know, that, it might be that that's the most. The best use of time, I, I, I don't know. What does Shelburne do? As far as like connection between school and town select board?
Uh, I think I'd best describe that as topically they've gotten together when there was uh, something that needed to be worked out between the two.
Right.
Uh, but there isn't, I know of no general regular meeting that they do.
I think the chair used to meet with, it seems like I remember.
The chair and the select board.
Right, I think there was that, maybe over a cup of coffee or something, I think they would do that.
Jessica, how long does it take you to reduce minutes of these meetings?
Um, rough draft, I could have them to you by morning, polished, probably um, Saturday morning.
Rough, rough would be fine, just to remind me to do these various things.
So sometime probably, or is it really hard trying to?
Perfect, perfect, no sweat, thank you. All right. Seven point O, we are blessed with no action matters this month. And seeing as there were no adjustments to the agenda, we will continue to have none. The consent agenda is in the packet, we need to approve minutes from our last meeting and some director's orders. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Fill them up.
Thank you Kathy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Colleen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Now we go to director's comments. All right, Kathy? Bill?
I did forget something.
Would you cede your time for the moment?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's, it's the VHI proxy, so there's like one vote per unit, so one vote for the Heinsburg board, one vote for the Wilson board and so forth, so. I don't know if anyone's going to the V S B A, V S A annual meeting, I am attending. But Keith, if you want to, you can either submit this and have the VHI board vote for you by proxy. Or you can give it to somebody who's gonna attend.
What's VHI?
Vermont Educational Health Initiative.
And.
So right you.
And the.
Healthcare.
And the agenda, it's, there's like a half hour meeting and the agenda is um, because that needed to be reorganization of the board for whatever reasons. Um, there's a slate of board members that are recommended and so there would be a vote for that, and I don't think there's another. Accepting the minutes from the last meeting perhaps, but I don't think there's anything else.
I think in general, you're correct, the key item is to elect a board for the, the, the next configuration of the VHI.
So you need to, you, you can sign it.
On behalf of the Heinsburg School District and then I give it to someone who I want to appoint as the proxy, which is, which is either.
Or are you collecting them and they're all getting sent in?
I think more official route would be for the five of you to vote to have Colleen, unless you're planning to go, have Colleen represent you at the meeting. And then fill it out like that after you all voted to, if you're okay with that, Colleen.
Yeah, I'd get two votes, but I mean essentially it would be, there'd be the proxy vote and the CSSU board vote, right?
Yes, you get two votes.
Yeah.
You don't have to tell too many people there that you're voting twice.
I thought she meant amongst us.
Don't want that responsibility.
I'd just as soon have it as a motion in seconds if she does turn into that kind of debate in the middle of this meeting.
So what's the motion we want?
Service proxy for the board.
Have Colleen service proxy at the VHI meeting.
I make a motion that Colleen serves as proxy at the VHI meeting.
Thank you, Bill, do I have a second? Thank you Lisa, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Congratulations, Colleen, Carrie Armentel will.
Oh, you, oh, you put that up, you just have to sign there.
Okay, I can do that.
Board member.
Director's comments, you're good. Director's comments, you're good. Bill?
I had two comments. Um, I had questions from the community. The first one surrounding Allegra's position. Um, the comment was is, how do I say this appropriately, but I'll try my best. What are Allegra's pla, Allegra's plans? And if her plans are not to stay with us, when should we start talking about posting the position to a?
Geez, we're off appropriate for us to have that.
Okay, well, well, the, the, the discussion matter was is, was when are we gonna start having discussions about? If we need to post the position, when are we gonna do that? Is that?
I, I think, I think it's unfair to put Allegra on the spot.
I didn't mean to put her on the spot. I wouldn't mean to put her on the spot.
But, but I think that, I think it is a fair question to at least ask the question, what's the timing for?
And that would be a lane.
Okay.
We need to ask for that question.
And I think th, their, their thought was is, um, community feedback I've been getting is, is, you know, let's do the best we can not to make it a fire drill at the end of the year. So, let's get the timing in place and the process in place. That was a concern from the community to me. That was a tough one. Uh, the second question I had was, and I got calls from three different people about um with this week or was last week, um, after kneecap breaks, the teachers or someone had decided the kids had breaked, that movies were shown in the classroom. And was that the most pop culture movies? And was that the appropriate um use of time in the classroom? And if that was gonna be shown, why don't we show learning movies? And I guess the question was is, should there be some kind of a standard put in place from the administration to the staff about use of time in the classroom around pop culture movies or those sorts of things?
The director's comments are, are a poor place to begin to assign work.
To begin to assign, yeah, yeah, so.
Well, not, not assign work, but, but the, the concern was is, all right, let me reframe it. I'm sorry if I'm trying to get my arms around to do this properly is, you know, I think you know that, you know, why is this being done and is it the proper way to use class, uh classroom time? And it was just concern from parents, from parents.
Parents contacted the teacher?
I'm not sure.
That would be the first place to start and I would think the school board would wanna direct them to contact the teacher directly. But we don't have a clear reference for that, like it, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that could have been. I don't know how to, but I would, the first place to start is always with the teacher, to find out what's going on.
The, the indication I got from this parent, this was a one-off thing, that this is a, this is a common occurrence. So, I'm just, just.
Yeah, still the right line of communication.
Needs to go to the teacher directly.
I think that the triage is teacher.
Right.
If it's a bigger problem than administration, then, you know, if the administration believes that it is something maybe that rises to the level where we need a policy in place, then, then the board, the, or prot, yeah, maybe the board gets involved at that point.
Or the protocols, right.
But I, my, my understanding of director's comments is it's a, for what it is, it's a freewheeling time where we can just say what's on our mind and put it out there. It doesn't necessarily need to be discussed. Well, it shouldn't be discussed and it doesn't need, or can it be solved, but it's just to put it out there.
I, I, I look, I'm, I'm sorry Allegra, I look at it as, it's, when I'm getting calls from.
Right.
Parents, I think it's my duty to relate their concerns to either the board or the administration. And um, that's what I'm doing.
Right.
Can I interject one small comment? I, I'll make it brief. You don't even have to put in minutes if you don't want to. But as the Pi person who's here in the audience, I can say I have heard the same feedback that Phil has numerous times in a setting of Pi where the parents came to Pi. What can Pi do about this issue? I tried to dis, dissolve it, defer it, put it elsewhere and, and send it elsewhere and it was quiet for a while and they found another path so that it's gonna come back, the issue in world. It, because this is now the third time I think I've heard it come up in a different, kind of different settings. Because I think no one's really sure how to come at the problem, but it was discussed at Pi more than it was.
No, I, I think I can, I can address is that, um, Allegra and I are working really hard on improving communication. And beside one parent who's in the room now, this issue has never been brought to our attention.
It was brought to Bob's attention numerous times last year.
So that, okay, but, I mean, and, and we have no, as, as Allegra has mentioned, um, you know, it's, it's not anything that, well, it's.
So the, what would be helpful for us, I think, is to have the protocol that, and I'm glad people are reaching out to you too. I think that that's, you represent everybody in the school board, but really, I mean, in the community, but to have the parents contact the teacher. If they're not getting a response from the teacher that they feel is helpful, or then they need to contact us. I think that that's the protocol that really is followed in a lot of schools and kind of, and works, works well. And if you wanna call and give us a heads up, that's great.
I, I, I think that this, one of the two parents, three parents who contacted me had gone down that route and not gotten satisfactory results or even a response. Not looking just an explanation.
I have never been contacted.
But, you know, maybe it was Bob and not you folks, but um, you know, I think it's a conversation worth having if the community.
Right, if they're frustrated, sure.
It's frustrating and feeling like that, you know, certain parents decide what their kids, what's presented to their kids to see and not see, and those are the choices that the parents should make.
Right.
And not choices that a teacher should make.
Right. So, I would like to take off my director's hat and put on my parents' hat. I would say that the feedback I would give around the kneecaps is actually very positive. I've seen a great change from the way they used to be. Um, and I, and uh, from, at least in the middle school, I think the approach that's being taken is um, is very, very positive and, and uh, and the breaks that are given are fun and help the kids get to the next test. So that's just feedback. I, I know that it's hard to be administrator because there's probably how many kids in our school? Times how many parents and we probably all have different points of view, so I'm just trying to point out there's many different points of view or, or maybe just different experiences going on in different parts of the school. I put my director's hat back on.
Thank you, Kathy. Welcome back. Lisa?
I'm just like no clueless again. Um, I don't really put a director's comment and unfortunately somehow, some way, I thought I was printing today's agenda, but I printed May eighth. So, this is where, but I wanna know, except on our agenda, are we going into um executive session? I, because I would like an update.
It's, it's on the agenda and I was gonna ask if we needed it, so now I'm hearing that.
I just wanted an update on negotiations because I was not a part of the CSSU meeting and um, that would be great, thank you.
Okay. So then ten point oh is confirming meeting dates. Again, the, the calendar two point oh forum is tomorrow night here at CVU. Uh, board chairs on October fifteen and then our next CSSU and Heinsburg Board meetings on November thirteenth. Uh, not in this list because it wasn't confirmed. Again, is the budget forum on November fourth at HCS. Uh, so then next one is eleven point oh executive session. Do I have a, given the desire for it, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
To, excuse me, to talk about negotiations. Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy.